Magic.
Now we have Chris.
The hat or the chicken.
Yeah, Kristoff is on now, so.
We're full.
Oh.
It's 6:00 PM, Mary.
All righty. Good evening, all. I'd like to welcome you to our July 27th, 2020 Town of Windermere Workshop. If you'd like to all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll show off our shorts. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
United States of America.
The United States.
To the Republic of which it stands.
Stands.
One nation.
Stands.
Under God.
Liberty.
Indivisible, flawless. And justice.
This is.
I'm not sure if we do more disrespect than respect with our attempts to do this soon. Well.
Under the circumstances, I think that counts as.
That'll be part of our. That'll have to be part of our debrief at some point. If you'll all join me in the invocation now. Father, as always, we look for your guidance as we make decisions for our town, for our neighbors and our community. We ask that you give us guidance, integrity, and the will to do the right thing whenever needed. As always, we ask you to bless our first responders to look over us in this difficult time of COVID and as well as protect all those around the world, men and women who support us each and every day in their own forces. Amen.
Amen.
We have Town Manager Smith indicated that we have one individual would like to make public comment.
Yes, Mary, and the date is July 28th, not 27th, just for the record.
Oh, I apologize. I see that. I was looking at the minutes and it was said, it said, you have your comments in by the 27th, so.
No problem.
Yeah, sorry. July 28th.
Yes, sir. We have Nora Brophy, 426 Magnolia Street. You may unmute and let us know your public comment is.
Okay.
Or you can reserve until after the presentation.
Um, okay, that's fine. I'll reserve till after. See if I have unanswered questions then. Sure.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Mary, that was it for the sign up. And if you'd like, I can go ahead and take over from here and go through what we're to discuss tonight.
That'll be fine. It'll save me from throwing into you for the presentation.
Appreciate that, Mary. As you know, so last year, if not before, probably about 18 months ago, we were able to purchase a majority of the railroad right of way from the Ward Trusts. We did that for $250,000. And probably back in 2014, we did a multimodal study which looked at pedestrian walkways. It looked at, you know, golf cart paths, so on and so forth. Whatever you think of multimodal is, that's what the study looked at. And what it did was it indicated that there was some routes that we would look at and be able to accommodate that multimodal network, whether, again, it's going to be on a golf cart, it's running, it's biking, so on and so forth. So we did purchase the railroad right of way. We took a look at it. And again, the whole purpose of this is to connect the entire town. Right now, we have a disconnect between the Canal South and Canal North because the current bridge will not accommodate a golf cart. We wanted to make sure that we were connecting not only with the area, the five block, but we want to connect the civic area, which is again the 500 block, 600 block, and also with our parks, and also with the HOAs and with Windermere Elementary School. So when we took a look at the, how we're going to phase this, in one area that we actually knew that we're able to have a phase, does anybody know Mary Blair?
I do not.
Okay, let me just get my finger on the trigger ready. So again, when we took a look at this, the one section that we were able to go ahead and actually have where we had all the right of way, because right now there's some pieces in between Sixth Avenue and Chase where there's some outlying properties, some private property owners that own that section. And we will continue to negotiate the property swaps that we've done in the past. And then on Sixth Avenue going east to the Grove area, we're looking at that as mostly a phase two. Again, you probably look at going from Lake Street over to the south and then taking your golf cart all the way to the Grove area. But the one location where we, again, wanted to start and it only took two, one was a just an all right giving to the town, which was the Rubio property, and then we purchased the Swanson property from them. I think it was around $10,000 for that piece of property. And to give you an indication of how good of a deal the town had received from not only the wards or some of the adjacent property owners and we were able to establish a corridor, was that we had a right of way acquisition specialist actually give us a quote on how much he thought it was going to be for us to acquire the entire length of the right of way. And it came to be about between 13 and 14 million dollars. So by being able to purchase the large amount of right of way that we did from the wards for the $250,000, I think was quite an accomplishment and quite, you know, a reasonable endeavor by the Ward Trust. So again, what we wanted to do was take a look at this one section. This one section is from North Drive all the way up to Park Avenue. And here's the canal. When you look at the renderings, it'll show 60-foot width of right of way, and that is going to end at the canal. And once you get south of the canal, it's actually going to be 40 feet. And when people think of trails and multimodal, you know, what I really want them to think about is the suburban section of what the West Orange Trail looks like. Not with the urban section of the West Orange Trail looks like, but the suburban, the area where there's tree canopies on either side. It's peace, it's quiet, so on and so forth. We took this to long range planning. We received full blessing from them as far as this project goes. And then we took it to tree board. And then as far as the concept, yes, they agreed with the concept. But when we actually moved into the second phase, which would be design of the actual pathway, we would incorporate them by having them walk with the arborist and look at how it's going to be routed, where we can protect the trees. Because remember, whether we use asphalt or concrete, which right now we're calling for concrete, we could see if we could split it somehow as far as the 10-foot wide pathway, or we can meander the pathway to make sure that the impacts to any trees or any vegetation or anything else that's out there is minimal. And since we own that entire right of way, we do have that flexibility of doing that. So, and also when it came to replanting along this area, as part of the design, we're going to incorporate their comments on what types of landscaping they would like to see, you know, in this section and other sections as well when we get to those sections, to make sure that they're in lockstep with us on how it's going to look, how it's going to feel, and to make sure that not only are we taking care of the noise pollution from the people on Lake Butler Boulevard, we're also beautifying the town as well. And we're also moving into design too. We're going to be incorporating comments from the people that live on Lake Butler Boulevard. That was one of the things that we talked to them about when we're looking at the purchase of the right of ways, that we want to know what their thoughts, their feelings are as far as, you know, what's out there, what they want it to look like. But that will get into the design aspect, not actually the conceptual plan. One thing what I want to point out is, is that this concept plan right now, it does not include a line of the bridge. So picture, I pulled up some pictures earlier, but think of like what you see over the turnpike in Oakland, where it has kind of that, you know, old railroad type of feel to it. So that'll be discussed during design. We can look at what type of a bridge that you would want. But the bridge right here would accommodate not only pedestrian traffic, it would be widened to accommodate multimodal meaning golf carts. So you'd widen up so two golf carts would be able to pass each other at the same time. And then, you know, let's say that you're driving a golf cart from Park Avenue and you're going south on to Old Dirt Main. What you would do is you would stay on to South Lake Butler Boulevard, you would get on to the the bridge, cross the bridge, and then you'd get back on to Old Dirt Main. You would not utilize the pathway with your golf cart because you have access to safe routes on Lake Butler Boulevard and on Old Dirt Main. And that would free up, again, the area for the pedestrian traffic to mostly be on the new pathway. When we get to Sixth Avenue, it's going to be different because, again, you're going to have a lot of golf carts that you're going to want to go to the Grove area. So we would make sure that that's an accommodated, again, both pass through with golf carts. But from a concept aspect, what we're looking at is again, a 10-foot wide path. You know, most of the, the area is already burned up. And then we would have a swale system that would be to the east of the actual pathway and in between paved Main Street. And this would be used as retention. We could use different variations of vegetation within that retention area, but this also, if we're able to go with the other phases, we would interconnect all of our stormwater systems from, it could be 12. It could just be from six all the way up to Park Avenue to make sure, as you guys have seen last June, July, when we get heavy rains, that that water takes a long time to percolate, especially when we have high water levels. This would allow it to percolate and would also allow us to divert it hopefully to ponds that don't get overflowing or overfilled. And also eliminate some of the ponding that we had by Lake Butler Boulevard that we've all, we didn't see back when we had, you know, the torrential rains back in those those few months. It also gives us the capability to hopefully maybe do a slight curbing on the main roadways so people can landscape up to the roadway. So you don't see that edge of pavement failures that you see everywhere else. You're not talking like a hard curve. You're just maybe talking about like Miami curve or something like that. But we would also look at the possibility, the enhancements to the existing road is maybe add like a two-foot bike lane. And why I say that, you say, why are you building a bike lane when you're doing, you know, multimodal path? Is that I'm talking about the people on the $5,000 bikes, the people in the Speedos and stuff like that. Those guys are not going to be, and girls are not going to be using this path. They're only going to be on the roadways. You see on the West Orange Trail all the time, they typically go on to, you know, 545 or some of the other redways so they can go faster, they can go longer, and they don't have to dodge a lot of other people. But this section is mostly intended just to be a, you know, pedestrian friendly type of pathway. So on the east side of the trail, you would again have, you know, chlorofriendly landscaping, you know, you'd have a retention area. And then on the west side of the trail.
Hey, Robert, can I jump in?
Yeah.
Briefly, so while you're talking about the east side and the swale, there is that opportunity for linear water retention and water quality improvements. But there's also two locations along this route, one on each side of the canal where you can provide an additional larger area for like a rain garden to enhance water quality. So not necessarily for the entire route, but there's two locations, one on each side of the canal that could also be used for improved water quality. That's all I wanted to add.
Thanks, Mike. I'm glad that your video is working now. And on the west side of the trail system, that's where we would do more of the heavier landscaping. So you'd be looking at, and you can still do this on the east side as well, where you do the oak trees far enough from the sidewalk, you know, and we're looking at, you know, crepe myrtles, you know, bottle brush trees, so on and so forth. And this is where we're going to work with the tree board and the arborist to make sure that whatever land and the people that are living next to Lake Butler Boulevard, what we're looking at as far as replanting over there, you know, or adding to what's there. You know, our intent is not to remove what's there, is to add what's there. But, you know, there are some smaller trees that are going to have to probably be removed. And it's some of the crepe myrtles that are out there. But again, crepe myrtles, we can give a 15 gallon or a larger gallon, and we could just move it over to the one side if we can't save it. But again, the trail can actually meander the entire length of the project when we actually bring it to fruition. And then some people may say, okay, well, why are you bringing this up now? You know, why can't we just go ahead and continue to have stress, continue to go to every single board and committee meeting and try to get their blessing? We felt long range planning was a great way to get their blessing on this. Because again, they, they're forward thinking to, you know, not 2021, 2022, but 2030, 2040, 2050. And then also the tree board as well, because there's going to be areas where there's going to be some tree impacts. And we want to make sure that they're incorporated into this as well when it comes to the replantings. But also, there has been a coalition that's been created by the West Orange Healthcare District that, again, as all of us know, that was the funding behind Health Central that sold to Orlando Health, and they have access to millions and millions of dollars. So what they want to do is get together with Windermere, Coe, Oakland, Winter Garden, and Orange County and say, listen, we want to look at West Orange County, we want to look at this district, and we want to spend money and take a look at how do we connect healthy communities? And the best way to do that would be with the trail system. So we're in, we got our first kickoff meeting last week. They want to have everything finalized by April of 2021. And also, you know, as, as part of that, you know, we're hopefully looking at significant funding from the district itself. I've actually talked to the chairperson, and they are really wanting to go ahead and jump on this as fast as possible as far as funding. When you see the cost of about $650,000, at first you're like, okay, you know, sticker shock, you know, it's a sidewalk, it's, you know, you know, a lot of trees and swales and stuff like that. But we've already put away a significant amount of money for this project and for the entire length of the project by our tax increase by about three years ago, where we put $130,000 away each and every year for this. So when now we get the funding from, you know, the district, you know, I also want to, in case a fifth or fourth Care Act comes out, we hear grumblings that it's mostly going to be related to infrastructure, and we want to make sure that we're ready in case that comes out, that we're able to go ahead and, you know, incorporate this type of project as well as our water plan and other projects that we might have in case federal funds do become available. One second here. It's always fun being the.
Well, you're doing that, Robert. I mentioned that for the foundation, you know, they regularly do $500,000 projects, million dollar projects as well. So, as well as a lot of small grant activity. So it's, it is a significant amount of funding, but it is not unthinkable that they would come in at a, at a pretty impressive level.
Right. And when I told them what we were looking at as far as price, they weren't scared at all. They've been giving, I think, millions and millions of dollars to not only Winter Garden and Coe, but they're also working with Oakland as well. You know, they help fund the Oakland historical preservation building that's on the West Orange Trail. So they're very involved in the community. They have a lot of money to spend, and we want to make sure that we tap into that resource. But what we're looking at today is we want to make sure that we have just a concept, just like the Windermere Pavilion, that we can present to not only the West Orange Healthcare District, but also if there's any other monies that are available that we can have, actually tap into to say, hey, listen, we have a project, it's ready to go. All we need to do is move forward with the design. But all we're looking for again is just a quick blessing on the concept, just like at the pavilion. So we can present that to not only the West Orange. Please help me with this, Mike. It's the West Orange.
Healthcare Coalition District Alliance? I'm not sure.
Healthy, healthy, West Orange healthy.
Yeah, and just another benefit of that is that there's multiple municipalities coming together with, with a plan that's all connected together. So that not only benefits this trail by making it connect to something that then just gets to an extensive and ever-growing network, but by partnering with other municipalities, it's, it's just really impressive when you compete for funding to be able to say, okay, we're going to connect to this big system that then has goals of connecting everywhere else. So just a lot of availability to kind of have some momentum and go along for the ride.
Right. And so, you know, we can either do it individually through a grant, and there's other grants that are available to us, especially with the fact that this certain phase connects to a school. There's the Safe Rocks to Schools. And there's also some other grants that we can explore, whether it's matching or whether it's just, again, like a Firdot grant or something like that. But again, you know, tonight is the night where we just say, listen, if you're agreeable to the concept, meaning the width, what it looks like, we can proceed. And then when we have the money and move forward with the design, we'll make sure that we incorporate the comments per each phase of the residents that are joining the actual project and that of the various committees that we've already engaged. So. You know, again, it's, I think, something that we've been looking forward to for quite some time. I think it was one of the main intents of us purchasing the railroad right of way. And when we did purchase the railroad right of way, everybody was scared. They were saying, okay, well, now they're going to make it a four-lane roadway. And that's definitely not our intent. And if we're going to put this much money and sweat equity into building a, you know, a a multimodal path that's linear from Park Avenue all the way to 12, I think that just pretty much negates that entire argument in perpetuity.
Thank you, Robert. Absolutely. This is quite, quite the opposite to the four-lane road. I think this will actually protect us from any pressure to four-lane road at some, you know, at any future point. Once this is a linear park as it really lays out to be. So it's pretty exciting. It's something that I know that I have championed for 10 years, and we had to work really hard to get the property. But, you know, we do have the property. We appreciate the Ward's family, their contribution there and, and council's willingness to step up to make that happen when the time was right. And that has been, it's going to be a really, a big and impressive centerpiece for, for our town. And it's going to, you know, I just, I think it sets us up for the future in terms of safety and walkability and all the things that are valuable to, to a great place to live like the Town of Windermere. So I think with that, are you ready? Or do you want to hear any comments at this point, or you want to go right to council?
Well, I have two questions that need to be answered. One was, why didn't we, in the concept, go with concrete? And I have Mike and Scott on to go ahead and answer that question. So I'll go to Scott or Mike first and then turn it over to Scott.
Sounds good.
Sure. And we, we looked at asphalt and concrete a little bit and really settled on concrete due to improved durability and constructibility as well as long-term maintenance. We went with a six-inch, which is thicker than, than typical. And again, that's to help prevent it from being popped up by tree roots and other settling type issues. So we generally, constructibility. There's pros and cons to both, certainly, but it was mostly the long-term maintenance that had us go with concrete.
Scott, do you have anything to add?
I do. And on top of the long-term maintenance, the concrete also gives us ability to, if we need to bridge over a root system, also the concrete on a sidewalk of this nature wouldn't require a base or a subbase, which would mean we would have to dig it deeper down and disturb more of the soil. So we're really trying to not disturb as, as anything that we have because we want to be sensitive to the landscaping and the roots out there and so forth. So a six-inch concrete is typical. All the concrete we replace in town, the broken concrete, our CIP, we go back with six. That's a new industry normal. Also, in this area here, I'd recommend going with a fiber mesh additive for reinforcement. So being on natural ground, especially railroad road bed, it's pretty well-compacted. So we want to meet what's called a T180, which is a density. And I believe we could achieve that real easily. And that way, we wouldn't have to, to go any deeper than the six inches of the concrete. And a lot of that could probably actually be laid right on top of the railroad bed, but that would be up to Mike and his team. So longevity and less disturbance in the soil.
Yeah, and certainly constructibility, a lot easier to form it out and to put concrete up there than it is to get an asphalt paving machine driving, especially through some of the higher burms north of the canal.
And then.
A little bit easier to build.
The other one that we're talking about was, you know, a question came up as well. I thought this was supposed to be for golf carts as well. And as I indicated before, you know, first, with the, that we have with the Rubio R's paving from the canal to north, it just gives a safer area for people to maneuver their golf carts on the actual existing roadways. Just in this location, as we get to the other phases where we're going to the Grove area, then you're going to see more golf carts moving on to this pathway.
Yeah, if there's an opportunity for the golf carts to be on the low-speed road, that's a better, better place for them. And that exists throughout our alignment here. And again, the bridge would accommodate golf carts. So it's, you're on the low-speed road, you get on over the bridge and then, and then back off. So we'd, we'd work on a, have an actual transition that would be easily understood so that you'd keep non-motorized vehicles only on the, on the trail itself.
Yeah, again, exactly like you see on the West Orange Trail.
Right. So you'll shed anywhere you can, any extra golf cart traffic, but then there will be places where it will be permitted and allowed and, and signed as well.
Yes, sir. And also, again, we control the width of the sidewalk or the pathway. So if there's areas where we need to drop it down to eight feet or, again, do the split in order to make sure that we're protecting trees or winding around, that's completely in our design control.
Sounds good. Yeah, and I second the, the concrete. I think it's cooler as well, you know, than asphalt. And, and even though I know the asphalt would be thicker on this than it is like at Central Park, I mean, I think we've seen at Central Park where it's maybe not been the, the best way to go for the long term. So this is something I think we want to make sure we, we build with a, with a 50-year lifespan and something that we do for the long haul.
I apologize if my wifi is lagging. I'm using the MiFi that provided to me by the Windermere PD, so I'll just blame chief since it's not on here.
It's like no-fi.
We do have, again, the public comment from Nora, and I do see two comments that were in the chat box that I can address. But I didn't know if you wanted to turn over to Nora first, since she was the first one to sign up.
I think that's only fair. We'll let Nora Brophy provide some comment and questions and make sure we answer anything that she has.
All righty, thank you. Nora Brophy, 426 Magnolia Street. So I was in the, the meeting, this original stakeholder meeting. And I had some, some concerns then that I still have. And one is that I would like to see a visualization of the entire trail because I still, I don't have any idea what the plan is to do with this in front of Town Hall. I mean, is the idea we're going to rip up everything that's already in front of Town Hall and put the trail in? Is the trail going to end? So I think it would be very helpful for everyone to, to have a better feel for what the entire concept of this is. Because this, you know, we're talking about $700,000 for six tenths of a mile. So it's a pretty expensive proposition, you know, even if we get someone else to, to kick in a lot of money. And as you know, I was, I'm not in love with the idea of a 10-foot wide stripe of concrete down the center of town. My, my fear is that it's going to look like another road. And so I think if we could have some conceptualization to scale of what this is going to look like as it goes through town. Because I think, I mean, from walking down Dirt Main all the time, it seems to me like a lot of those areas on the, on the other end. On the, on the other end are much narrower. And a 10-foot wide concrete stripe is going to take up most of the, of the property, I think. So those are my concerns. I, you know, would, would really like to see some alternates to concrete. Because that's a lot of concrete right down the middle of, of the town.
Thank you, Nora. Appreciate that. I believe that what we're discussing here tonight is the, would not only be the support to move the project forward. But the support to allow for design, which would give us that, that visualization. And those next steps for, you know, public input, et cetera. Is that correct?
Yeah, we would come back with a scope of work for KHA to do the actual design. But what you're looking at right now is again, the concept. It's, it's what you're going to see like when we have the Bessie, the Butler projects, you're going to see the typical section. So this would be seen as a typical section where it would be able to be accommodated. Now, it's not going to be able to be accommodated in certain locations. Again, like Nora said, you know, in front of Town Hall. You know, we may just add a couple of feet to the sidewalk that's right from a Town Hall. You know, and when we get to the Sixth Avenue, you know, we might, may not need all this area over here to the. It would be on Sixth Avenue to the south, but you know, we can still do some of this over here on the way over there. So again, this is a typical section as you see it now, but again, we have the fluctuation to meander it all that we want. You know, we can add a bench here, a bench there, a water station, so on and so forth. But as far as the concept, you know, this would be that concept that we would try to incorporate through the entire land.
Agreed. Any, any thoughts, comments, questions from council?
Well, Mayor, there's, there's two comments that I had in the chat box. You know, we have one that would like to see city to community, for community engagement, also sitting area and a butterfly garden outcrop. Those can all be incorporated into the design. We do anticipate, again, having rest areas like where people can sit down and dedicate benches. We've already planned one for the Rubio's, one for the Swarons' ins. The next thing I see is maybe we have a small area dedicated to the wards, maybe a couple of trees planted to them. As we've indicated, you know, we are naming this the Ward Trail in honor of them. And number one, the fact of the good deal that we got for the purchase of this. But number two, you know, to honor the life and legacy of the wards, parts of their passing. They really love this town and by acquiring this, it, it just adds to that as far as having it the Ward Trail.
Absolutely. And, you know, a big part of what we're talking about in terms of, you know, there is flexibility. For key parts and components of this is it, you know, if someone is interested in. You know, customizing various parks and wants to make those donations and then it's approved. And, you know, there definitely is opportunity here for things we've talked about. You know, like a garden area, we've talked about pathways, benchways. Maybe, you know, some cover or a small pavilion type of thing. Or, you know, just a, you know, a basic covering that, that isn't, you know, super intrusive or anything. But, you know, for a little shade, water stations. As well as some of those things that we're going to need to incorporate to make this happen, which might be, you know, some retention areas. Some, some good landscaping, you know, in terms of compromises that we'll make along the way. To, to allow us to have the land and right of way necessary to move this forward. What are the other things that, are we going to remove invasives or how's that, or do we know at this point?
As we were going through the, the alignment, like we started with a site visit where we had multiple different multidisciplinary people going. Going up and down the, the alignment. And if we were in a situation where there was a fairly clear path of where the trail should go. And there wasn't invasive tree in the way, then yes. But we didn't go out of our way to say like, all right, let's make sure we get all of them along the way. Of course, you could while you're doing construction. So maybe that, if, if desired. But as we were going, like there were some camphores and some other invasive species that were, that were right kind of along the path. And so we, we just kind of noted to remove those ones and then move along.
I think a logical approach makes sense. I don't know that we need to go, you know, then you get it kind of into. You know, different focuses landscaping that they've done and buffering. So, you know, I mean, that can, that can make things difficult and challenging. I didn't know if it would be a requirement or not.
I think we definitely want to remove the Brazilian peppers as we go through. Because those are just bad.
Okay. All right. I think, I am sorry, Robert, we cannot, some of those. Some of the comments I think were just to you. So I couldn't see them. So.
Yeah, they were private, but I just want to make sure that those are on the record. And it's going to be, it's all saved on the record to do a private chat to somebody. Saying Robert's hair looks crazy or something like that. That's going to be part of the permanent record. So be careful what you put in that chat box.
I need to erase some things then. So, all right, council, thoughts and thoughts, opinions, questions? I want to make sure that everyone gets the opportunity to weigh in here.
I'll go first.
Fair enough.
I like the idea of the, the bridge having, looking like a train trestle. It's reminiscent of the, the history of our town. And that, that, that bridge in Oakland on the West Orange Trail was an actual train bridge. So I think if something could be constructed like that, I think that'd be fantastic. Something with a lot of character, really a centerpiece of the project. And I'm wondering if, if it's possible to prioritize that part of the project. And get the bridge done first, or does this all have to be done at the same time? Because if the bridge was done first and that, you know, both sides of the canal, it would, you know, immediately start benefiting. People of the town while the rest of it is being done. I don't know if that's an option, but something that we might want to consider. Especially for, you know, golf cart safety. I see people going over the bridge on the road. And, you know, it's very unsafe. So as far as the Nora's concerned about the, the 10-foot wide stripe of concrete, maybe we could intersperse some areas with bricks. You know, in between, just for decorative purposes or even sell commemorative bricks with family names on them. If you want to put like a little dedication or something to that nature, it might be, might be an interesting way to, to dress it up a little bit. And, you know, I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea. Really thankful to the Ward family because I know, you know, their previous price was, was unattainable for us. So this is really a gift from them to our town. And, you know, I think they would be proud to see what we're doing going forward. And also one question for Mike Wood. Woodward, where, where's the bear habitat? That's what I want to know.
It's far away. If it, if it shows up on a desktop GIS environmental research, you have to say something about it. So it shows up and so it's like, okay, we will look for bear sign as we move forward. And then if we did find some black bear habitat or some scat perhaps, then you'd have to accommodate it. But I believe that to be incredibly unlikely.
I know there's a black bear in the Tibet Butler Preserve. Because my brother used to live two doors away from there and he came out to put his trash out one morning and there was a black bear in his driveway. So they're not that far.
There you go.
I was there Saturday and it might be the soft one inside their nature.
Yeah.
By the time you were done that, you looked like a black bear covered in all that mud. So. And Bill, you get kudos for reading every square inch of the, of the assigned reading. So good job.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that.
Council, any further comments?
I have seven questions.
Councilperson Andrew.
Actually, though, one of them was already taken care of by council member Martini. I also agree with maybe looking into having the bridge be, be constructed first if, if at all possible. Because that's a, that's a point that along the way that right now could benefit our town. So I don't know how feasible that is or not. But another one, I have heard some concerns as some people skimmed through this document a little bit. That, and not in this particular meeting, but otherwise in other conversations about some people being concerned. That the Dirt Main Road would be paved. And I just wanted it clarified during this meeting that we're only talking about that one section. Because this is a concept for only this one section of, of the plan. And that wouldn't, you know, that would just be that one from North Avenue up to the canal we're looking at paving.
Correct. And that, I think all the neighbors know about that project. And everybody that lives on that stretch knows that that's a mud bog whenever we have any rains. I mean, a couple of works out there and it's a safety issue because a lot of kids that ride their bike to elementary school use that area and that crossing. So yes, that is the only section that we're looking at.
Yep. And I use that section every single day myself at some point. So.
Also, I believe that, also Liz, just so you know, I believe that was an item that's already been approved by council.
Yes.
Yes, exactly. And I just wanted that for anyone on this call so that no one had that concern going forward.
Fair enough.
I was looking at that one section. And then I also would like to have anyone provide assurance that. We wouldn't then if other sections, you know, due to now reducing the, the pervious, you know, land. Capacity there along the rest of Main if we end up putting. Okay, well, but now let's also look at paving some of these other sections that is not at all contemplated at this point, if you're foreseeing, correct?
Yeah, it's not.
Okay. Section 5.2, where you have anticipated alignment. I would just like to request if there's another version of this document that is produced that instead of having. Regarding the tree survey with an arborist, the wording there says should. And I would prefer to have it say will. And in fact, I'd even like it to say will. Duct a tree survey with a licensed arborist. That would be referring to some people that are concerned about that. And then also, if at all possible, we could have in there, it's specified that the Windermere Tree Board will have a representative. To review the survey and the mitigation strategy.
Yeah, that's going to be the scope of services when we do the design.
I know that's the, I just want to make sure that it's out there so that people have that assurance. I think this one I can skip, so I won't even spend the time on it. If surveys show that there are gopher tortoises, skinks or other protected species in the area, what options will, will there be? Will that completely stop our project? Will we not be able to go forward with that section?
There's, there's, there's typically mitigation opportunities for, depending on the species. It could be relocating them typically with gopher tortoises. They, they can be relocated to other areas. I'm not sure the exact plan for each species. But if found, then you would have an environmental scientist give you a recommendation on what to do and then, and then mitigate it that way.
Okay. Thank you for addressing that. The water drainage improvements. I understand that the rain gardens can be put in as natural filtration. And that because of the, so what I read in, in this document is that the width of the trail. Is such that the design will not require attenuation or treatment. So we won't have to put in those measures, but that there is the opportunity that we could put in some things. And I think it's in here, the ditch blocks. I'm just wondering what kind of opportunities we can have and can we be proactive on decreasing the amount of pollutants that are carried through the outfalls? I know that we're going to improve the drainage, but I'd also like to make sure that we were mindful of protecting the lakes, especially Waseon Bay. Which, you know, recently has started to, there's been an increase in pollutants there and that has started to impair the water quality in that, in that body of water.
Yes, and there are some of those opportunities. While storing the water, you are, you are improving the water quality. And by having specific types of plants, some of those plants can remove some of the pollutants. So yeah, there are linear opportunities throughout the typical section, as well as two specific areas where you could provide additional water quality enhancements.
What, what, can you just very briefly explain what ditch blocks do?
You got it.
Um, no, I, I don't know enough about ditch blocks to do that for you. I would have to go back and talk to other people. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Scott, Scott can address that or I can. It'll, it'll, it pauses the water to where, you know, it can fill up and then go over to the other side. You see it over at, what was previously Rossa Reserve? Scott, you there?
Correct, I am. What a ditch block does allow you to retain a certain amount of water while also providing a. Your ditch is four feet deep. I'm just saying, and I'm, I'm not saying we're making a four-foot ditch. But your ditch block would then probably be three feet high in the bottom. So when the water retained that general location, then when it got so much in intense rainfall. It would allow to build over the, the ditch block and act as an outfall structure.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Scott. Let's see. And, and actually, this is Nora addressed this a little bit too, wanting to, you know, in the future have a little bit more of kind of the anticipated overall project. So that we can look at the different sections. There are some, some, some parts in this, this concept document. That I'm not sure if they would apply to the entire trail once it's completed or if they just apply to the sections such as. You know, that we're not planning on having any increase in traffic or, or community impact and those kinds of things. Which I would assume would be part of the entire project and anything we look at going into the future. But I just, again, for reassurance to know that. Not just this one particular section. And that was it. You don't need to say that. And that's just kind of a, I'd like to see that in the future. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think too, there's a, there's a couple of examples of where, when we get to those areas where there is a lot of outfall now. Especially down by the bridge, I think you, you'll see quite a bit of improvement just from the ability to filter and divert. A lot of that, that's probably going straight into the canal area there now. Because it's, like you said, it's, it's always saturated in a difficult area. All right. Thank you, Councilperson Andrew. Council, further comment, questions?
I do.
Councilman McKinley.
What is the, and I guess Mike or Scotty, the one, your standard sidewalk. Is how thick and how much underlayment goes on it on a concrete sidewalk?
They can either be four inch, four inches thick or six inches thick. It depends. And then underneath, it's typically just compacted. You don't, don't typically build a base underneath it. So either four inches or six inches. It depends.
Okay. And there's nothing that goes under the concrete? You just lay it on there?
Correct.
Okay. And then for asphalt?
As long as there's suitable soil to lay the concrete on, let me clarify.
Right, right.
He on a, an old railroad bed, I think I'm finding that that's all compact soil. And, and what we've found in the past, in my history. And I know we don't have big vehicles and so forth on here, like Duke, hopefully he's not going to drive over. But six inches thick, it's a little extra money, but it gives us a lot more longevity there. Like I said before, or mentioned before, that when we go back and replace sidewalks, these broken pieces throughout town. We always back with a six-inch stick.
Okay. So what's the anticipated length of time that we'll be able to use this 10-foot wide, six-inch thick sidewalk? What's, what's the lifetime of it?
Of concrete in general?
Yeah.
I, I don't know that we have history, but I know referencing concrete pipe is 100 years.
Yeah.
As, as opposed to longevity of asphalt. You gotta remember in the Florida sun, we're not always so concerned about the traffic that's on the road that's speeding it up. But the material that's in it, it's called emulsion. It's a liquid. But in the old days, it used to be oil, but it gets brittle and hardened in the Florida sun. And that's where we typically find most of the breakdowns in asphalt surface, where it doesn't happen with concrete.
Okay, because most of the West Orange Trail is asphalt.
Correct.
Lead is the part from Plant Street down to Crooked Camp Brewery. And that's in the very downtown area. The rest of it is, is all asphalt. And my understanding is that asphalt lasts generally about 20 years and. And my understanding is that asphalt lasts generally about twenty years and concrete about thirty. And that's from research that I've been able to do. Um, for asphalt, what would be the uh beneath it? What would be your stabilizer there?
Yep, you need about twelve inch stabilization, then a four inch base and about two inches of asphalt. And again, that'll help it. Um, you know, if if you want to go less than that, then you'll end up with it just failing sooner and and having a lot more puddles and ponding and places where where water will collect, but um, yeah, you want twelve inches of stabilization followed by four inches of base.
The ground is compacted, you can lay concrete straight on it. That didn't, doesn't make much sense.
Yeah, well, it's because asphalt itself is is a flexible pavement. Um, so whereas concrete's rigid, so concrete doesn't need the base, but asphalt does.
Okay, and even though it's compacted, you'd still have to put that on even though they didn't on the West Orange Trail?
I, I'm sure there the the asphalt on the West Orange Trail has a base and stabilization. Um, I'd be, I'd be pretty surprised if it doesn't. Typically when trails are built, they built them to the same type of standards as you would a road, except for the 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 top layer doesn't have the same heavy traffic on it. Um, but you do want it to.
Putting in here, and I realize that we're going to be getting money to help us do this, but I I've always thought that you should spend money wisely and you know, we're building something that you could drive a truck on with no problem. Uh, six inches thick is mostly for parking lots, from my understanding, uh, for concrete. And then you're going to have to have expansion joints every, if it's ten foot wide, then every ten foot, you have to have an expansion joint, correct?
Well, the Portland Concrete Institute recommends um expansion joints every eleven to fourteen feet. A parking lot would typically get an eight inch um concrete, but we would also on a parking lot with heavy traffic on it, we build a subgrade on it as well.
Right.
Just like we would in asphalt road. Um, but the big difference is like Mike pointed out, the flexible pavement as opposed to rigid pavement, there's a coefficient difference there. So your concrete will typically hold up because of, it 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 creates a bridging pattern where a flexible pavement, like Mike said, will go in and out. You ended up with ponds and we'll end up something like we have at Central Park.
Okay, how long has that been there at Central Park?
About five years, six years.
Okay. And we put a fourteen inch base under or twelve inch stabilization under that?
I don't believe so. I don't know that for sure. And I and I want to correct my math. Um, that that might be, it might be eight years.
Yeah. Okay, um, yeah, I just, ten foot wide to me is excessive. The six inch thick is excessive. Uh, and I think we could get by with eight foot since we're not going to be having golf carts riding up and down the whole length of the thing, but just periodically. And I know that a lot of places I've been, the sidewalk is eight foot wide and two golf carts can pass on it. Anyway, uh, the idea itself is good, uh, and we'll we'll do some more research and I I'd just like to to see a cost difference and for longevity. One of the things that gets me too on concrete is when you have an area that is not hit by the sun, you have the the fungus that gets on there and it's very slippery. And I know one of our commercial buildings has a lot of trees over it and I have to have it pressure washed about three times a year to keep that fungus from growing on the sidewalk, uh, even though we seal it, uh, whereas you don't have that problem on asphalt. So it's just something to think about, but uh, yes, the the program I like and we we need to proceed with it. And I would like to see the overall a concept of what the overall is going to end up looking like.
Thank you, sir. Any other additional comments from council?
I'll just make a quick comment. Um, you know, in regards to the concept, I'm very friendly to it. Uh, the width of the sidewalk, I'm favorable to ten feet because I believe a typical sidewalk now is five feet. Um, and I think it's even more evident now, um, you know, with COVID and everybody being, you know, more active. Um, where you have a lot more people on our sidewalks now and uh my personal experience, you know, walking the dog, a bike comes by. Um, I have to move over to the grass and having that little bit of buffer, you know, would allow us to, you know, both parties to be able to pass each other uh just fine. Um, I think what what's going to make or break it is just going to be landscaping and that's what we need to really concentrate on, you know, when we're doing the final design. Um, you can have an ugly block building, um, but you know, as soon as you put not nice landscaping in front of it, it'll make the largest difference in the world, so.
Thank you, Chris. Councilman Williams, any thoughts or comments?
Um, not a whole lot of comments. I mean, everybody's kind of covered some of the questions I had. Thanks, Liz. You know, I'm I'm all in favor with this concept. I think we've always had a lot of a lot of uh need to connect uh the north section of Windermere with downtown. So, you know, on the ten foot and eight foot wide, I think we need to look at it and how it looks in the design, but that's part of the design work. Um, whether it's ten or eight or six, where it needs to go based on, you know, what kind of trees that we're going to avoid and that kind of thing. So I'm all for it, uh, moving forward with this.
Sounds good. And uh, thank you, Councilperson Williams. And uh, thank you, council, all of your comments and questions, and we appreciate all of those. So we have a few folks, uh, it did, there's not a ton of us on tonight. Did anyone else want to add anything uh for the good of the discussion? I don't see anybody raising their hands or anything, so, okay, well, that will will consider we'll consider that everyone has had the opportunity to comment, at least at this early stage, so. Uh, for tonight, uh, council, so we're basically looking, um, you know, we're not going to vote tonight, but this this is a general consensus to move forward, um, get some more specific in terms of specificity in terms of design. Um, the the concept is sound, uh, maybe some cost comparisons for um of concrete versus uh asphalt with base. Um, and then maybe some discussion in terms of of width, but at least eight feet and um and uh heavy landscaping and the opportunity to to kind of customize as we go. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Staff, does that give us all we need? And Bob, I'll come back to you, sorry.
Absolutely.
Good. Robert, is that everything that staff needs?
Yeah, because right now we just have lines on the map. Um, this gives us more than that and actually gives us the concept so people can actually visualize what we're looking at doing when we ask them for money. So, yes.
Good. All right. I like that. Thank you all. I think it's a, like I said, it's a very, very important project and and I think an opportunity for this council to leave to leave the their mark on our community in a really positive way. I I think I agree with all the COVID we've seen. It's it's, people are walking and out and about and I think this is a a really great opportunity to 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 just further um enhance what we're trying to to do here for for the entire community. Any mayoral or council liaison reports anybody has for the good of the order?
Just a reminder that we have a budget workshop on Monday night and then we also have a waste committee meeting on Wednesday night.
Roger, sounds good. Um, I want to remind everyone that uh that the tropical weather is upon us and to keep your eyes uh uh focused on what's going on out there. I know I I, you know, it is what it is. It 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 looks a little uh interesting, so we want to pay close attention to that. It's the last thing we need to be honest uh with everyone from a um from it, from a thousand different uh perspectives, uh, but in terms of uh, you know, of a storm that may potentially follow an Irma-like track, um, that is a, that is a bad thing for not only for the entire state, but really for um the ability to house and shelter all those who may need to be evacuated. And that's going to be really problematic with COVID, so um, I won't uh I won't dwell on the subject, but I won't sugarcoat that either. That's it's truly problematic. So, um, any other additional uh staff reports?
Not really. We're moving forward. The, we had a meeting today about the uh existing facilities, what to save, what needs to go. Um, with Stephen Withers, John Fitzgibbon, Tyler from HJ High and George Polker. And we're looking at probably getting the keys turned over to us on Friday, then doing a week of uh getting, making sure that the IT, electrical and everything is going. And then probably the week after that, uh, gradually moving uh personnel over to the temporary facility before we start demo. Um, we always can control the demo date, so I want to make sure that we have everything right in the temporary facilities before we actually do that switch.
What are those buildings rated to, Robert, wind wise?
I'll have to defer to Scott.
One fifty.
One fifty.
They need, they need order building code.
Cool, so fifty miles an hour more than the current facility, so.
I was going to say seventy-five, but you're absolutely right. If you'll notice, they have straps every four feet.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, uh, we will adjourn our meeting at seven oh one, so we got you out in an hour tonight and appreciate all the input from the residents as well as council and staff. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody.